Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 et sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this meeting is open to the general public. Is there anybody here from the general public that has anything that is not on the agenda that would like to say something? Okay, not hearing anybody. If you would call the roll, please.
Mr. Didich?
Here.
Mr. Mealy?
Here.
Ms. Veely?
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore?
Here.
We also have our Board Planner, Ms. Favate, our Board Engineer, Mr. Canjiano, and our Board Attorney, Mr. Wendell.
All right. I would like to call application number 21:511, Ferring Properties at 100 Interpace Property to come before the Board at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Committee, Joseph O'Neil of Gerafalo, O'Neil, Ruggiero, here on behalf of Ferring Pharmaceuticals. We're here for Ferring Properties improvements to their campus there, doing some landscaping and related improvements. And with me is Mrs. Dazzle from Ferring Properties to describe what we're going to be doing. If I could have him sworn.
Okay. So do you swear for and tell the truth for this planning board tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Can you please state and spell your name for the record? He didn't have to stand, I told you that story before, I'm sorry.
My name is Juan, the UAN, last name is Rial, R-I-A-L, I'm the Facilities Manager of Ferring Pharmaceuticals. Thank you, Mr. Rial.
Do you have some waivers that we should attend to first?
Sure. As the Board will hear, the Minor Committee will hear, this is a fairly minor application, that's why it's here. So we did recommend a number of waivers, given the limited nature of this application, that doesn't really affect the building itself. We did ask for some additional testimony confirming whether there are protective covenants or deed restrictions in place, testimony on how solid waste will be handled, the operation of the courtyard, the use of the courtyard, as well as more information on tree removal. Otherwise, really, most of the other checklist items that we've indicated do not apply, given the nature of the application.
Do I hear a motion approving the waivers as presented in the BFJ Planning Report August 20?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the waivers.
I hear a second?
Second, Veely.
Can we do an all in favor on this, or?
Sure can.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You, councilman, council, I should say.
In fact, you, Mr. Rial. Can you please describe for us what the purpose of these improvements is?
Well, with the pandemic being such an impact, the, in general, to the community, but also to Ferring, we needed to expand our available space for employee collaboration and still maintain a social distancing. We felt that the courtyard was a really nice area for us to kind of improve and allow employees to go in that area and sit and have conversations out in the open and still maintain the social distancing.
So what are your employees doing now?
Well, right now, we were all working from home, because this recently came back, and we're kind of, still kind of segregating, but we want to kind of expand a little bit so that there's open spaces, so that they can kind of, you know, meet without maintaining the social distancing inside. It's a little more restriction on the, we have restrictions on the conference rooms, so I'll take you to the conference room, book space. If you do it outside, it's a little bit less, just more of this space.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Any questions by members of the Board of this witness on this testimony? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on this testimony? Hearing and seeing none. Your case?
Thank you. Thank you. Why don't we introduce you and your parties. You're going to need to be sworn.
Do you swear for and tell the truth for this planning board tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Janine Parlato, J-E-A-N-I-N-E, P-A-R-L-A-T-O.
I'm sorry, spell your last name again.
P-A-R-L-A-T-O, Parlato.
Okay, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, I believe this will be an expert witness, so if we can have the qualifications briefly of Ms. Parlato.
Ms. Parlato, could you give the Board, please, the benefit of your experience? Where did you go to school?
Yeah, Bachelor's and Master's of Science Degree in Civil Engineering from NJIT. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is in good standing, and I was the project manager in this project, and I'm intimately familiar with the design and township's code.
Ms. Parlato, this is your first time. This is my first time. I don't know, we've got some tough questions here, so.
I'm not sure if it's one of the two mics on the tip. That's it. Doesn't like hanging down, Joe.
I can tell you. Okay.
All right. Chair? I don't have any question. Any other members of the Board have questions of this witness? Enjoy.
Thank you.
Ms. Parlato, referring to the plans which we filed and you have mounted up here, could you show the Board what it is we're proposing, please?
Mr. O'Neil, before Ms. Parlato gives us her testimony, I'm assuming the plans that she's going to refer to are the same plans that were provided to the planning board for tonight?
That's correct.
The subcommittee, that should be. Let's just mark it as A1, just for the purposes of the record.
Sure. Yes, correct. Yeah, this is the previously submitted plans. We are looking at Sheet 1 of 4, the cover sheet.
A1, it's very safe. It's okay. So normally, you don't always have to go in there like this, maybe?
Okay. Just 27, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're doing a great job, don't worry about it.
Thank you.
Never listen to the attorneys, they always screw things up. Go ahead, Ms. Parlato.
I'm glad you're here.
Mr. O'Neil, your witness.
After that, how can I respond? Ms. Parlato, why don't you turn to the site plan and show them what it is we're proposing exactly? This is located on the side of the building?
Yes. The property is located at 100 Interpace Parkway, Block 136, Lot 43.1. This is a minor site plan application. The lot is located, the lot is approximately 25 acres in size, and is located within SED 5 District, which is the Specialized Economic Development District.
This is a, this is Page 2, and it's the plan? Just orient us where we're at in this building.
We are looking at existing conditions plan, Sheet 2 of 4. The project area is within exterior courtyard, existing courtyard, which is fully enveloped by the existing building. So this here is the entrance of the building, and it's all building around. The existing courtyard contains a meandering walkway, which is shown here, with various other appurtenances, including a decorative wall, some bollards, and some light poles. The existing courtyard also contains some utilities infrastructures, including drainage. All the stormwater runoff from the courtyard, and also the roof leaders drains south of the courtyard into this existing main hall, which is located outside of the existing We are looking at the site plan, grading and utility plan, Sheet 3 of 4. As stated by Ferring before, the purpose of this project is to provide collaborative outdoor space for its employees. This was a existing, already existing courtyard, and they are proposing a central plaza area with two proposed 11 by 20 feet pergolas, which contain motorized blade movers on top. Also, we are proposing a rain garden, which will mitigate the increase in runoff due to the additional 990 square feet of impervious surface, and which will be located east of the plaza area. The plaza area is going to be stone pavers. The project also includes landscaping improvements, which are going to be just around the front of the plaza area, which will include shrubs, perennials, and grasses. Furthermore, the existing walkway was proposed to be replaced. The replacement has a wetty accord. It's my understanding that the replacement did not expose any subgrade soil, and the existing, the proposed pavers were set on top of the existing paver beds, so we did not expose soil. Therefore, we did not account this in our limited disturbance. The total limited disturbance includes the paver areas and also the grading around the rain garden, which will also be built around the existing inlet. So no drainage patterns will be modified, all the drainage, all the stormwater runoff will sheet flow towards east, towards the proposed rain garden. And the total limited disturbance is going to be approximately 2,900 square feet. The project is fully compliant with the SED zoning requirements, and no variance are required, and also meets all the criteria for the minor site plan application. Besides that, we have a minor soil permit that we submitted. The project's going to accommodate approximately 13 cubic yards of excess material, and the route, the transportation route will be Interpace Parkway into a county road, Cherry Hill, into State Road. This concludes my testimony.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Members of the Board have any questions of this testimony at this time?
I have one question. What was the height of the canopies, from the grade to the, to the top of the pergola canopies? Do you know what the height was?
The architect's going to testify on that later.
Thank you.
10 feet.
Any other members, or professionals, have any questions?
I just wanted to clarify, I think I understand what you're showing here. All those existing pavers that are there, are they being replaced? All of them?
They, it's my understanding that they are well being replaced, and they were just replaced in kind, and no exposed soil, and they were just set on top of the existing paper bed.
Okay, because it wasn't clear to me if they were all being replaced, but thank you.
Yes, that's why we're not included in a limited disturbance.
Just so I can, it appears, so there's no downspouts from the canopy, everything, the basin is at the low point of the whole courtyard, are you saying?
Yes.
And it's going to sheet to that?
It's just going to sheet flow into the rain garden, yes.
And then what happened with that inlet? That inlet now is at the bottom. Did you raise that? What did you do with that inlet to make it a rain garden?
I'm going to flip to show here the detail. We're going to excavate around the existing inlet, so we're going to maintain the existing grate and just create enough area to accommodate the increasing runoff.
Lower the ground?
Yes, and lower to the ground and just as an outlet structure. It's going to.
Just as we noted on our letter, just so that for Ferring Maintenance Staff, to add the maintenance notes for the basin onto the plan, so that, you know, they have the plan in their office, they'll know what maintenance to do to keep the basin operation.
Yes, we will.
That's the only comments I have.
I was just going to ask, will there be any tree remove, removal as part of the project?
No, no tree removals.
Any other members of the Board? Mr. Wendell?
Mr. O'Neil, based upon the engineer's comment about the maintenance of the, of the rain garden, would you agree with me that as a condition of approval, that the rain garden will be maintained, and should the township find that it's not being maintained, township will, township will have the right to go in and take care of it? Because we've had this issue several times in the past with detention, retention basins being put in, and then, this is rather small, but some not being taken care of. So as far as a condition of approval, should the Board, should the Subcommittee be inclined to approve it, that they will just, the township, the property owner will keep the township up to date and work with the township in terms of keeping that area maintained and cleared, and township may, may have to come in, should the, should the property owner not maintain it, township may have to come in and clean it out. So that, with that.
We would accept that, obviously upon notice, and be able to cure if there was a problem first.
Mr. O'Neil, you and I will share some really great legal language to put into the resolution, and I'm sure between your legal mind and what I have, we'll come up with something good.
That's fine, thank you, yes.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Oh, Mr. O'Neil, one other thing, I saw in the paperwork, and maybe there's been an update since, there was expiration notice from the Morris County Soil Conservation District. Has that been updated, to your knowledge?
Yeah. That was for the loading project, the loading dock project, and has not been updated. The project was in pause. So we will update it once the project continues.
Yeah, that's been suspended for now. When we resume that project, we'll get that re-updated.
Okay. We'll put it in the usual customer, right? Thank you, Chair, that's all I have.
All right. Mr. Mealy?
Mr. Chairman, ma'am, will there be any changes in lighting?
No changes in lighting. It's my understanding that the canopy is going to have some lighting. The architect can speak a little bit more about that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none. Anybody from the public have any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs.
Ladies and gentlemen. Do you swear for and tell the truth for this planning board tonight?
I do.
Okay. Can you please state and spell your name for the record?
My real name is Harry Allen Jacobs III, but I'm called by Terry Jacobs, but my drawings, when they're signed and sealed, that's my name.
Okay. And I assume, Mr. O'Neil, that even though he's using aliases, this is going to be your expert, correct?
That's correct.
All right. So why don't we get a brief recitation of his qualifications?
I have a Master's of Architecture from the University of Pennsylvania and a Bachelor's from Dartmouth College.
You testified before this Board before, Mr. Jacobs?
I have for GSK, and then I was here in June for Zimmer, but I didn't, I don't think I testified, but I see familiar faces, but I was part of the team.
So I submit him as an expert for architectural purposes, this evening?
And Mr. Jacobs, your license is up to date?
Yes, it is.
No, I don't have any objections on my end, Mr. Chair.
Don't hear any objections up here either, so.
Mr. Jacobs, can you show us the pretty pictures and details of this improvement here?
Sure. So our scope is very limited on this.
A2. I got planner screaming in my ear. All of a sudden, somebody wants my attorney.
I need more money. Make more money than the plan.
The cover sheet showing the courtyard in relationship to the first floor of the And the plan, this is, these are prefabricated, let me actually go to the third plan, this is going to be clearer for you. Whoop. A little 3D view. Prefabricated pergolas, sorry, with operable louvers that we bring power to so they can open up and close for the sun. There, your question, it's nine foot one and a half, the top of the pergola, sorry, it was close to 10 feet.
Thank you.
There's two of them, so they can have a table underneath, and then you can adjust the, the louver for the sun. And so for rains, I think it's going to be somewhat of a surprise, because you could think you're underneath there, and it's going to rain on you, but, so that's not the one thing that they're out there during a storm, but they'll just call you, so.
Yeah, I'm sure they won't.
And there's a little interior drainage, because, you know, there's a little lip around here, so it comes down this post, but it's not really draining the roof, because it's going to be taking that, that water down. And we have to provide, we provided foundations for these, and then power out to the automated pergolas. So that was really our scope. And you're buying these as a manufactured item to be installed, so. And these were just our general architectural notes for actually permits. So I guess if we get through this part, this, still going for building permit.
Your question about lighting?
Yeah, I, oh, there's also a TV mounted here, and I don't believe we have any lighting in there that I can see from our electrical drawings, so I don't think they're lit, but.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
You can't, you can't testify from the back, but.
Yeah, so right now, on our.
Maybe crack that jog, Mr. Jacobs' memory.
Yeah, no, I don't think we have any lighting on this currently, so.
Okay.
But there may be lighting available.
There could be lighting available, I guess it's an option.
That's part of the pre-plan, isn't it?
Yeah.
That would be an ambient lighting? Low light?
Oh, low lighting, well, yeah, just, I guess in the early evening, if you wanted to be out there.
So you don't trip on it?
Well, yeah, I don't want to say trip, that's, it would come looking for us if they tripped, I think, so.
Probably call me.
Yeah. And these are the operable louver blades. They're pretty simple, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And tables and chairs, that's all standard purchase stuff, correct?
This is stuff that, not in our scope, you're going to be purchasing outdoor furniture. And whether it's a TV out there or not, I think that's, that's also optional, so.
No neighbors to watch TV with, so.
I don't think so, yeah. Well, it could be for projecting, having meetings, outdoor meetings, so.
That's the intent.
That's the intent, not TV, you know, flat screens, but. And that's really, that's really our scope. So our scope was to coordinate the installation of these foundations for them, bring power to them, and coordinate with the civil drawings.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. I have no further questions for this witness.
Any members of the Board have questions on this testimony?
Mr. Chairman, question.
Mr. Didich.
Yep, so real quick, so I thought the, it's not a roof roof, and water will come down, so I'm just wondering, if there are equipment like TV or electrical equipment, how would that be protected?
Well, we have to coordinate with getting outdoor screen that would work outdoors, and that's what.
It's all optional right now, we still not discussing whether that be installed or not, but there was some video or TV screens that are meant for outside use, external use, but we're still kind of researching that with.
Okay. Yeah, like, I'm more concerned about the electric equipment and the water and the safety hazard, right? Not, not as much about TV going bad, right? Okay.
So, we have, we have an electrical end here on the front of the project, so we need to do that, and also get the correct outlet to it, so forth.
It will be installed by license profession.
Right, right.
Okay.
As part of the building permit.
Other members of the Board have questions? Our professionals?
We're good.
No, no questions? Any members of the public have questions of this witness at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
No further witnesses.
You have no further witnesses?
Okay, thank you.
You wish to sum?
Yes, we think this is a de minimis application, but a great improvement for Ferring and their employees to utilize the outdoors, as was indicated, it's the wave of the future, and everyone wants it, and that's what they're trying to accomplish.
Okay. I hear, I don't see any members of the public begging to come up and speak either way in this case, if there are any. No? All right. Thank you. Mr. Wendell, you have any?
No, I think we, we covered the important piece I wanted to cover with Mr. O'Neil, and you know, the Board has a motion, perhaps now would be the time, and I could always supplement, should anyone have forgetfulness as to potential conditions, or maybe forgot his glasses.
What was your, what was your potential condition again, that the Board may or may not agree to?
The condition of approval that Mr. O'Neil indicated his client would agree to is about taking, continuing maintenance of the rain garden, and being advised by the township that perhaps there may need to be further maintenance and opportunity to cure. Mr. O'Neil's client will work with the township to ensure that it is maintained properly, and it actually functions as it's meant to.
Do I hear a motion approving that with that stipulation thrown in?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the application number 21:511, Ferring Properties Incorporated, 100 Interpace Parkway, Block 136, Lot 43.1, minor site plan and minor soil moving permit, and conditions mentioned by our Board Attorney.
Are there any other items that are missing? No? Okay, do I hear a second?
Second, Didich.
All right. Nora, if you could call the roll, please.
Mr. Didich?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I steal a coaster?
Yeah.
Thank you. We don't have drinks, we use them as drinks.
Good night. Booze and whiskey, so if you get the winner first, please.
Yeah. I mean, you have a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, let's, do I hear a motion to adjourn the minor site plan subcommittee?
So moved.
Second?
Second, Veely.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with the NJSA 10:4-6 et sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Didich?
Here.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Here.
Mr. Ruggiero?
Here.
Mr. Mendel?
Here.
Mr. Mealy?
Here.
Mr. Napolitano?
Here.
Ms. Veely?
Here.
Chairman Von Aken?
Here.
We also have with us our Board Planner, Ms. Favate, our Board Engineer, Mr. Canjiano, and our Board Attorney, Mr. Wendell.
Thank you, everyone. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I, the Pledge of Allegiance, do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, are there any members of the public that would like to speak about any items not on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing nobody come forward, we'll go ahead and get started with our agenda, starting with application 21:51.
starting with application 21:513, RV RSA at 99 Green Bank Road, Block 493, Lot 1, major soil movement permit. Hello, sir, are you representing the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chair, my name is Andrew Brewer from Marizidi Falcon. We represent the applicant, Rockaway Valley Regional Sewage Authority. Good evening, Chair and members of the board. This is for a major soil moving permit. We were here before the board, I think it was a year and a half ago, two years ago, for the site plan and the capital review project. This is a new building that's going on, being installed, the new filtration building for the sewage authority. Now we're back for the soil moving. What happened, that building is all approved, got to dig out the dirt, it's got to go somewhere, so we need this permit. I do want to make, just mention two or three little things here before I talk about who, additional information you may want. One, unnoticed, we published in the newspaper and said that everything certified mail, normally in certified mail, you get the white receipts and they get stamped either by your office or the post office. We inadvertently didn't stamp them, but we have a certification from our secretary of the all went out, and nearly all the green cards came back before the 17th anyway. They went out on the 10th and that certification has been provided, so we have provided notice and certification, under oath that it was done on the 10th.
And Chairman, piggybacking on the council statement, I've had the opportunity to review the certification and exhibits that were provided by Mr. Brewer's office, and I find them to be acceptable as far as notice under the MLUL, and the planning board would have jurisdiction by virtue of that notice for tonight's matter.
All right, I appreciate that.
Of the two other little things, on the application form, we put on the location of work, the correct block and lot, but there's a mailing address of 99 Green Bank Road, Booton. That's because the mail goes to the Booton mailbox, post office, obviously this is in precipice. The other one is that we were notified by the contractor. Down at the bottom, it says the route, it says Green Bank to Vreeland to 287, and that's expected that will be most of the route we are to get off the site. However, depending on some testing and they may need another route, I can give it to you now, but I didn't want to forsake of completeness, there's a possibility. It would be Green Bank to Knoll to Vale Road to 46. And that route apparently is picked, they don't have weight limits on those roads, and it's not expected they're going to do that all the time, but did want to notify the board of that. With that being said, I have Nancy Wild from Mount McDonald, who can answer any questions. I think you may or may not still have the plans, I'm not sure what else you'd like to know, but we also have the executive director, Joanne Mancini, and the engineer for the RV RSA, Bob Pacino, should you have any questions?
Mr., through you, Chair, if I may for one second, on that issue of the, of the route that Brewer indicated.
You, Mr. Brewer, you would agree with me that if the board were inclined to approve the permit tonight, that the route that you had indicated would be a condition of approval, that they would adhere to the greatest degree possible to adhere to those movements for the soil, removing soil from the property, for the truck movements?
Yes, and we will direct our contractor, Capola Contracting, to use those routes.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. I don't believe we had any waivers to discuss on this application.
Our chairman, I don't, I don't review major soil moving permits, that's, leave that to Andrew.
Well, actually, I'll defer that to Justin Liz's office, and he reviewed it, and we have his memo, and he does not have any concerns with the application and the ads that any, any additional issues or details will be discussed with RV SA at their destruction free application.
Okay. Are there any other details you would like to present or any witnesses to bring forward before we start asking our questions?
No, other than, I think they, excuse me, the estimate is 3,500 cubic yards. That expectation is that there will be 500, 500 per day, it's going to go between seven and three. They use 25-yard trucks, so that would be 20 trucks a day, is the expectation. But apart from that, no more details and ask away, and obviously whatever witnesses you'd like to ask.
Okay.
Thank you.
Members of the board, any questions? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Mandell.
I'm concerned with your alternate route. That is a residential area, and moving 20 trucks a day through a residential area seems to pose a problem, to me at least, and I'm sure the residents of that area would also find that a major problem. How do we ensure that the alternate route is only used in an emergency?
We can.
Mr. Brewer, if you can, from my edification, the main route that's being used, can you just go over that again, because I may have missed that one?
Sure, the one that was put on the application, the expectation would be Green Bank to Vreeland to 287.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer.
We notified just a few days ago, I believe by the contractor, that depending on the testing, and I'm not sure what other conditions, but if the board is adamant and wants to minimize at all possible, we could, you know, we will, but then another route may be, as I discussed, the second one would be, Green Bank to Knoll to Vale Road to 46.
Did the, did the contractor give you reasons for why there might be, you know, according to testing? I mean, it seems.
Well, yeah, okay, so. That's all right.
The executive director, Joanne Mancini, I'd like to call her to answer any questions?
Ms. Mancini, if you could just, do you swear, do you swear affirm and tell the truth for this planning board tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Sure. Joanne Mancini, M-O-N-D-S-I-N-I. Joanne, J-O, capital A and N.
Okay. Through you, Chair, the witness has been sworn.
Okay. Could you please repeat the question for the witness?
Well, the primary question, did the contractor let you know why there might be special reasons for changing the pathway?
Yes. It's wholly dependent upon the soil testing. They said they have two sites, one, one site for soil disposal would be in one direction, the other site for soil disposal would be in the other direction. If the soil happens to be contaminated, it has to go to one place, if it's uncontaminated, it can go to another. At this point, I'm not, I think the Vreeland to 287 is the uncontaminated, and the other path to 46 would be the route to the contaminated site, although I don't have the ultimate destination for that site.
That's my next question, is where is the alternate site? Which way would you be heading on Route 46?
That I don't know. I just know the path, they said to get to that site, they have to go to Route 46.
Well, if you're going, I would assume you're going southbound on 287 in the end.
Well, that's what I'm questioning, whether you go southbound, if you take Vreeland to 287 south and then west.
Or maybe just west on 46, yeah. Or maybe they're trying to get to 80. Those are.
Yep.
I mean, that's major, coming down Knoll to Vale is major residential area.
Knoll and Vale are truly residential, they are not major, they're, they're local roads, basically, and that would be very, you've got schools, you've got all sorts.
Yeah, I'm saying schoolchildren, and then will limit the hours that you can do it, and I mean, there's all sorts of parameters, so.
We understand, we thought that that might maybe be the way to do that, in the extent that they are going to need that alternate route, to put it, to narrow those hours so they are not going to be, you know, so the, after the kids are in school before they leave, if we can figure those hours out.
Are we, is this a recommendation of the council of a soil moving permit, or are we?
Yes, so to answer Mr. Dinsmore's question, I think Ms. Veely's question, this is, at the end of the day, a recommendation to the council, because the council actually approves the permit at the end of the day, however, just like when we review an ordinance, our recommendations have to be reviewed by the council and considered, and if the board feels strongly that some conditions should be placed on a permit, then the board can say these conditions should be considered by the council when they decide on issuing the permit. That'll be up to them, because that's the ultimate authority, as Mr. Brewer well knows, to issue that. However, you know, we can certainly set limits on hours for certain deliveries as well as potential routes, if the, if the applicant is agreeable to it.
Maybe Ms. Mancini, she had another comment on the contractor, if we could, just maybe.
Yes, please go ahead.
For fullness, the contractor did send me an email when I asked about the routes to confirm in preparation for tonight, and what the contractor sent me was a copy of Parsippany's ordinances showing that the route, the second route he chose, that those roads do not have weight limits, so I don't know if the, if this board does not put the limit on us, in which then we have to put a limit on the contractor. We may have to face some type of change order if it's with the contractor, just to, you know, and just so we have all the information on what would happen.
Having had several of these come through our board, usually the concern among the board, I don't want to speak for any of them individually, but it's more about, you've got large vehicles that are going through residential neighborhoods, creating disturbances, and in this case, going right by one of our elementary schools, so I think that's where the concern comes from. Do you know if the route which would have headed more east down Knoll Road towards Change Bridge was considered, or does that have a weight issue?
I do not know.
Okay, I know there's a bridge that goes over, it may not be passable for.
Unfortunately, the weight came up, unfortunately, yes, because we knew the application, we knew the path that was on this that Capola said, and then very recently indicated, you know, in the event of testing, this would be the other, the testing indicators contaminated, this would be the other move, we have accepted.
So, you know, just to interrupt a little, what would be considered contamination? What are we talking about in terms of the material?
Well, it's, it's what the, what the site that accepts soil would take. Every, every disposal site has a list of contaminants that it will and will not take, so it really is dependent upon how the soil tests out.
And what are some of the contaminants which could potentially be on your site?
They probably wouldn't, they probably wouldn't know that at this point, Mr. Chair, and I think that that's a little bit beyond the scope of what they would know in the testimony they'd be able to give, and we're getting, then you're kind of traipsing into circle ish issues.
Yeah, I think there's, there's no indication that they're, and this isn't a remediation or a cleanup.
Right.
But, but Capola, having done enough soil moving, knows that when you, you know, you've had a building there, you've got other construction on this site, and operations on the site, sometimes things show up, and there are hundreds of things that could be there. You think, whatever sewage facility is going to treat for 40 years and whatever things, you know, they may be using to air, theoretically, those could be in the way, other than that, you know, there's, it's just sewage treatment, so, that would depend, whatever you might see there. There's no indication that it is there, but Capola did have to raise that issue.
Okay, I understand. Mr. Mandell?
Would it be out of line to propose that they still use Vreeland to 287 and then decide to go east or west once they get to 80 or to 46?
I don't know that it's improper to recommend, and I apologize, we haven't, hadn't spoke with them for the precise reason why that was the ultimate move they proposed. I don't know if it's awkward, I don't know the driving.
Well, Mr. Brewer, I think if you're hearing the commentary, which I know you are, and I'm sure you're taking copious notes, that between now and when the council considers this, perhaps you and your client would be best to go and speak to the contractor and see, based on these concerns, perhaps there's a way to minimize, if not eliminate it, but certainly, I think, Mr. Brewer, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the board chairman, but I know that the issue was raised about the school hours, certainly, I think the contractor should be able to work around what would normally be, if you're talking about a 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM drop off, 3:00 PM end time, that the.
You tend to do.
Do it, do it outside the normal school pickup, drop off hours. You would agree that'd be a condition of us sending that up to the council? Thank you.
Knoll was made a long time ago and was actually part of an emergency route that they designed in so that it has, it has the heavier vehicle specifications, but it's still a local road.
Yeah, what I think was problematic in our area there, not only for us, but for Jersey City. For example, if you were to hit the, any of the, Beverwick, any of the larger roads, it's surrounded by all the little secondary roads, residential roads, so.
It may well actually have been designed around the Jersey City reservoir and the RV RSA being there, so. I don't know that for a fact, I just know that it's, it's a better, heavier duty road, even if it's still a local road and residential.
And I'm sure you're sympathetic, probably having driven through these neighborhoods, knowing the, the areas that are, are impacted. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mealy?
Since your primary route is Vreeland Ave, have you sought any comment from the town of Booton, which is, Vreeland Ave is in Booton? Are they going to object? It's a residential area.
It's also the truck route. It's also the truck route, Green Bank to Vreeland, they're marked truck routes.
It is, okay, I wasn't aware of that, okay, fine.
But I did plan on having a courtesy call to, I think we did it already.
You have to swear.
Yeah, swear on it.
Go ahead. Sir, do you swear affirm and tell truth for this planning board tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Robert Bochino.
Okay. And, Mr. Bochino, it seems like you're the gentleman that may have the answer, Mr. Brewer?
Yes. Yes, I talked to the Booton administrator, Neil Henry, he's aware of our application, of course, was following this meeting, will be in contact with him, just to let know what's going on, but he definitely wears it, application, we had to get that, that's more than, for him, also, so, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the board? Okay. Mr. Cagiano, did you have any other, anything to add?
No, I just wanted to, just from a traffic standpoint and the transportation, the mobility of the trucks, Vreeland Ave, Green Bank to Vreeland is the quickest way out to 287, and would be most likely the shortest route to get where you need to, where the contractor needs to be on 46, because it's, he can come down to the 287, 46 interchange right here at this building, and go east or west without going through Vale Road, without going through Knoll Road, without going through Beverwick Road, and it's just, it's a very direct route. I think it's the fastest and easiest way for the trucks to, to, from, from your change order standpoint, I don't see any loss of efficiency for having them go down.
I often sit on that side, and I hate this response from applicants, oh, well, it's in our best interest, so we're going to do it, but that's, I think you've just made the case, Capola is not going to do this alternate route unless there's something we are going on and a need for, if in fact it's the same contractors, they got, they, they're close to set, they're going to want to use that, and we will inform them to go look at the map, if that's the best one issue.
Okay. So seeing, oh.
Just one, one more question, thanks, Mr. Chairman. It just, I, I travel those roads, and the question is, you may not have the answer, but it dawned on me, does that bridge there on Intervale Road even handle the type of trucks that we're discussing? You know, I'm not expecting, I think that's a question that somebody should get the answer to, because the weight limit on that bridge, they just refurbished that bridge a couple of years ago, and I don't know what they strengthened it to, so there might be a moot point that, you know, they were just not allowed to, to get that size of truck on there. That's all, thank you.
We'll start to look into that and confirm. Thank you, it's a very good point.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right, so seeing no other questions, I'll open it up to the general public, are there any questions from the general public for the witnesses presented? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public portion, and I'll entertain any motions from the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mealy. Yes, Mr. Mealy.
A motion to approve application number 21-513-RVRS-A99-Green Bank Road, Block 493, Lot 1, major soil moving permit.
Okay.
So we're moving a motion to recommend to the council that we accept this application, that they would permit the major soil movement, subject to questions about the route out.
So stated.
All right, no, no.
So with the, with the, I'm sure, once again, Mr. Mealy would agree with me, that with the additional conditions that the applicant have its hauler, if it does have to operate on the alternate route, that it absolutely does that outside school hours, and that it will have further conversations with its hauler as to sticking to the main route, the Green Bank-Vreeland 287, which would be preferable.
Correct, and we agree.
Right. Mr. Mealy is, is that it?
So stated.
Okay. All right, I'll go ahead and accept a second for that motion.
Second for Jerry.
Okay, we have a second. Now, Mr. Mandel, at this point, is there anything to add? Okay, no further comments?
I'll add the.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure our motion got heard correctly, and, very good. Okay, at that point then, Ms. Jolie, would you please call the roll?
Didich?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
For Jerry?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
DePaulitano?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Fonakin?
Yes. Thank you very much for your application. Please take care. Okay, our next order of business for tonight is application 21:512, Robbie Patel on 33 Troy Road, Block 734, Lot 3. This is a minor subdivision with C variance for a two-lot subdivision.
21, invite Mr. Mandel over here for the empty seat. Mike Puppiro's not taking it.
He's got a whole bench there.
Oh, you prefer the bench?
Are you good, Steve?
Priya sat down there herself last time. Hey, Jeff?
You've got front review of the.
Maybe you want to switch that mic with the one over there? Maybe it'll be less noisy.
I've just been turning it off.
Okay.
Still feedback when I talk?
No, not when you talk. Just doesn't like pointing downwards.
Yes. Okay. Very good.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good to be back in person with you.
Likewise.
We're here for, as you indicated, a minor subdivision with C variances. I believe we have a number of waiver issues we need to address.
We'll go through those.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, we recommended a few waivers on the DEP letter of interpretation on wetlands. There do not appear to be wetlands on the property, it's been previously developed, so we recommended a waiver on that. This is not subject to Highlands exemption determination, because it doesn't meet the three-lot threshold, the three-unit threshold. There do not appear to be significant natural features on the site, we recommended a waiver for that. And given that it's essentially two homes, we recommended a waiver on the traffic study as well as the environmental assessment study.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the waivers?
So moved.
All right, motion to accept, Mandel, do we have a second?
Second, Dinsmore.
All right. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Didich?
Yeah.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
For Jerry?
Yes.
Mandel?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
DePaulitano?
Yes.
Veely?
Yes.
Fonakin?
Yes. All right, waivers have been accepted, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With that, I'd like to call my first witness, Mr. Khan.
Okay. How many witnesses will you be having tonight? Just, are, is it worth bringing them forward all at once, or? One at a time? Okay.
Give me practice.
Whatever, whatever Mr. Venzel wants in this case.
You know, otherwise I get, my arm gets tired. Do you swear a firm tell the truth for this planning board tonight, sir?
I do.
Okay, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Adnan Khan, A D N A N K H A N.
Mr. Khan, you've appeared before this board before?
Yes, I did.
You were accepted as an engineering expert?
That is correct.
And your license is still in order?
That is correct.
I would submit Mr. Khan again as an engineering expert.
Any objections from the board? All right, seeing none, please continue.
Mr. Khan, could you, using your exhibits, please go ahead and indicate what is we're proposing here today? And we're going to start off by marking this package as Exhibit A1 for this evening. I assume that is what you provided to the board previously.
That is correct. These are the same plans that were provided to the board, and they are dated May 14, 2021. What we are proposing on this property is, it's a single-family home, oversized lot. We are proposing to subdivide a minor subdivision into two single-family houses. The existing house on the lot will remain, and the subdivided lot will be constructed with a new single-family. We have some pre-existing conditions and actually some variances that we'll be requesting the board to look through, and I'll just go through some of them quickly. The lot area, actually, I just want to clear something before we go into the bulk schedule. Currently, based on the deed, the lot line goes all the way up to the center of Troy Road. However, the surveyor found a couple of monuments on either side, on east and west side of the property, that are in line with the lot lines of the adjacent lots. We didn't have the title at our disposal, so we don't know exactly if this area that is between this dark line along Troy Road and the central line was either dedicated to the township. However, there is a street there, so it is our understanding that at some point in time, this portion, this small rectangle that is pointing right now on the plans, was either dedicated to the town, or it's been, there's some kind of an easement that exists there. So if, for the purpose of our subdivision, we took a safer route, and what we did is we, instead of using the lot lines going all the way to the center of Troy Road, we used the lot lines where there are two monuments and in line with the adjacent lot lines. And then we compared our subdivision based on the bulk requirements for this area. If you look at the plans that are in front of you, you will see two lot area. One is the survey, which goes all the way up to the central line of the roadway, and the other one which says two monuments. So that is the line that we are using for our calculations here. So the requirement for the property, it's located, the site is located in Zone R2M, which is residential and residential mixed-use option district. The requirement for single-family home is 30,000 square feet. Existing lot is 48,996 square feet. And what we are proposing is to subdivide these, this lot into two. The existing lot will be 28,832 square feet, and the proposed new lot will be 22,143.99, or 144 square feet. So we are seeking a variance for lot area. Similarly, lot depth in R2M zone is 150 feet. The, sorry, lot width. Existing lot width is 199.14, and the proposed width that we are proposing is 90 feet and 109 feet. So that is a variance that we are seeking. We are complying with the front yard, both the existing house that is to remain meets the front yard requirement, as well as the proposed house will meet the front yard requirement. One-side yard requirement is 12 feet. The existing house has a pre-existing condition, it's only 7.7 feet on one side, and the proposed lot on the existing will be also 7.7 feet, because the existing house is to remain. However, the proposed house, or proposed new house, will have 21.79 feet sideyard setback. This also translates to combined side yard, where the requirement is 25 feet. And as I mentioned, the existing house has a pre-existing condition, so we are seeking a variance for the existing house, which will be 20.78 feet. However, the proposed lot will comply with the requirements. The next variance that we'll be seeking is the building, percent lot coverage by building. It's 10% allowed, and the existing house is 10.18, and the proposed, which we are seeking a variance, and the proposed will be under 10%. The same thing for lot coverage, 20% is allowed in the zone, and we are seeking variances actually for both the lots, for lot coverage. We have plenty of parking, and I will go through some of the engineering comments also to address what we did. But this is the layout that what we are proposing for the subdivision. The existing house is to the south of the property, which is going to remain. The existing house is served by a detached garage. The detached garage will be on the new lot, which is going to be demolished. There is also a garage to the existing house, so what we are proposing is a driveway, direct driveway to Troy Road to the existing house. Just to refresh your, I believe, if you guys have already seen this area, the existing house has a circular driveway, which is pretty big. It has two entrances and exits, and it runs around the property. So what we are doing is we are taking a good chunk of that asphalt out as part of this proposed development, and each house will be served by their own individual garage, individual driveway with the garages, and enough area to back up and turn around within the driveway. The applicant is proposing permeable pavers, and the idea there was is to, since we are exceeding the coverage, we're going to take some credit. However, the ordinance requirement is that any area that is drivable or cars are parked cannot be taken a credit for as a pervious. And that's something I'm going to talk in an exhibit that we prepared later on. But this was the original plan that what we were proposing. The next street I'm looking at is C-03. Again, this is the same sheet that was part of your package. It just shows how the grading on the site is. The high point on the site is to the south of the property, which is the rear, and everything flows down towards Troy Road. And we are, we are trying to maintain that grading pattern, and again, there are some comments in which I'm going to go over a little bit later, but the existing pattern or the grading pattern is not going to be altered, and it's going to follow the existing. Now I'm going to mark this as an Exhibit A2.
Okay.
Exhibit A2 is, we haven't submitted this plan, so that's why we're presenting it today, is based on the comments we received from the planner, the engineer, the water department, and I believe sewer department. So we try to address those comments to the extent that we can, and I think we covered pretty much everything. So one of the comment was the circulation, like how the circulation will work from the car. So if you look at it, like, again, that was part of the original plan also, we are showing a backup area, so the cars that will be parked on the driveway next to the garage, they have enough room to turn around and go in and out of the driveways facing out. So that was one item that we were showing on this one, on this plan. The other comment was the impervious coverage, as we are seeking the lot coverage variance, and we were not, originally, we were not proposing any dry well system. However, in this plan, we did recalculated the lot coverage and considering the impervious cover, the pavers as part of the impervious coverage, and now we are proposing dry wells for each house, even the existing house and the proposed house. And these dry wells, and we can submit, we will submit a report, are designed for 100 years storm event for each proposed lot. So that's another change that we are proposing. Also, I believe there was a comment about some trees. We are, there are some trees, actually, I was told by the applicant, there are some shade trees by the right of, or within the right of way, that JCPL tagged to be removed. And the applicant, along with few other trees that were dead on the property, they removed it. So what we are proposing now is three, three shade trees along the front edge, as well as we are proposing some evergreen trees along the property line to the north, as well as some shrub around the house. So there is some landscaping that has been added as part of the comment that we received. Okay, and I think that's pretty much. And again, for the house, and I believe like that was another comment, and we have the architect here, and she will go over the plan, what we did originally when we submitted, we placed a box, a placeholder box. And after that, after receiving the comment, the applicant got an architect, and she designed a nice house that will fit in this box and now meets the requirements for the coverage, and she can go over her plan.
Thank you, Mr. Khan.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. I do have a question concerning the drivable surface. You've replaced the pavers or you're not?
We are still proposing pavers, however, we are not counting them as pervious anymore. So they are included as part of the impervious coverage, and then we added the dry wells to account for that.
Is your professional opinion that surface is appropriate to park a vehicle on?
Absolutely.
I have no further questions for this witness.
Okay. Mr. Cagiano, would you like to start?
Yeah, I have a, just to start with the survey, and thank you for that description about the survey and the property line going to the center line. We would, if this board would, should this board approve this application, we would request or make a condition that the monumented, the property that's in line with the proposed, with the right of way, the monumented right of way, be that, that portion of the land that's in the roadway be dedicated to the town, with no question that it's not. In question that it's easement or not, it be dedicated. And thank you for doing the calculations based on the dedicated condition. So that's, that's important, that this is based on the dedicated condition of the smaller lot sizes. Could you just go over what the lot size is now? Is that conforming to the, to the zone?
No. The lot area, you mean?
The existing lot area.
The existing is, yeah. The requirement is 30,000, and the existing is 40, yeah, 48,096.
And then the same for lot width, existing is 199?
Existing is 199, that's correct.
That's 150 required.
That is correct.
The, and then, thank you for addressing the comment on the motor vehicle surface. And just for the record, we agree with the use of permeable pavers. However, as you stated, the ordinance and the regulations require that it be considered impervious for lot calculation and for stormwater management calculations and, and then, but you go through the process of designing them as permeable pavers, which is a very good approach. But yes, you, thank you for revising your, your approach, and do you have revised, does that change your request for variance or the impervious coverage counts that you did for your bulk requirements?
Yes, actually, originally.
The lot, I should say, the lot coverage.
That is correct. Originally, we were only seeking lot coverage variance for the existing house. Now, based on the revision, we are also seeking a lot coverage for new houses.
So you have the numbers for those?
Yes. So lot coverage for the existing house is 22.83%, and for the new house is. And for the new house is 22.21%.
And when you say the new house is lot 301 or 302?
Lot 301.
Could you just repeat that for 301 or 302, this way it's clear?
302, which is the existing house, is 22.83%. And lot 301, which will be the new house, is 22.21%.
And you said you addressed the comments from the stormwater departments for the connections?
That is correct.
We haven't reviewed, we haven't seen that one, we haven't reviewed yet. That was the main questions that I had for them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cagiano. Ms. Vlade?
Yeah, on the driveways, I think you, you were answering it from a circulation perspective. I didn't see Andrew's, I didn't see a comment from you on circulation or from myself. What the comment was on the actual number of spaces, which in the zoning table is indicated at six for each house. And so that was our question is why, why so many spaces indicated when only two are required?
I think we got a little carried away there, but just to explain, it's a long driveway.
Right.
It's a long driveway plus the turning. So technically you can park six cars, two in the garage and four back. So that's why we said, okay, we can car, we can park up to six cars at least easily. So that's the number, that's why we used it.
Yeah, it starts to raise some flags because you think, oh, maybe this will end up being a two-family house someday.
No, just the nature because it's a very long driveway and so that's the reason.
Understood, okay. On the landscaping unit, so you indicated three new street trees.
Yeah, we are proposing.
To replace the ones that JCPL has taken out.
That is right.
But then you said something about additional trees as well as shrubs closer to the homes?
Yeah, we are proposing like additional trees. I mean, and again, we are, we will work with that township forester, like if they need more, we can plant more. But we are proposing a tree, a shade tree on the property on the new lot. As well as evergreens along the property line here and then some shrubs in the front of the house.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Any questions from any members of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Just, this comes up for us often and so it'll be my turn to ask. What is the proposed height of the new, the new structure?
The proposed height will meet the requirements and I can give you, the requirement for the building is, let's see. 30, come on, where is it? It's two and a half story and 35 feet and we will be less than 35 feet. The existing house is less than 35 feet and the new house will meet that.
And is that from final grade, original grade, or how are you measuring that?
It's from average grade around the house.
At the conclusion of construction?
Yeah, finally, as part of the as-built, it had to be submitted by the contractor once they build it. But we are going to show it on our plan so that the contractor follows what's shown on the plan and meet that requirement.
I'm still not clear. So, so the height that you're measuring is going to be a combination of the, of where, where the, the, the grade is right now, combined with the combination of where the grade is when you're done? And we don't know where that grade is going to be, I don't believe?
No, actually there is a requirement in the ordinance, how the township calculates the height. And we are following the requirement based on the ordinance to calculate the height.
I'm sure you are. We've had conversations about that. It's going to be the final grade with the average around the. Right.
That is correct.
All right. Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
No problem, Mr. Frigari. Any other questions for the engineer at this time?
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I, can we go over the number of variances one more time? Because when you went over the impervious coverage is changed, that's not in the plan that we have. So there's two lot area variances, one for each lot. Lot width for both lots, side yard for one lot, building coverage and impervious for one lot and impervious for the second lot for a total of eight?
Impervious for both the lots.
Both, so that would be two, building for one lot, then the side yard variance and the two lot areas and the two lot width for a total of eight?
Yes.
And nine if you count if existing house is in a side yard setback.
Yeah, that is correct, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had.
Let me just count it again. So one, two, three. Actually 10. So two for lot area, two for lot width, two for, let's see. Oh, sorry, no, eight.
Eight.
Yeah, because I'm counting the areas.
But then the ninth one is the, is the pre-existing.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just, I do want to ask a question. Are you aware of any, any homes in the area other than this lot where the homes actually meet the 30,000 square foot requirement?
I'm looking at the tax map. The existing houses are much smaller, the lots are much smaller than even 30,000. I think they are more like in between 15,000 to 20,000 square feet range.
Yeah, this is, this is one of the zones that I thought for a long time should have been rezoned to R3. But people don't like to downsize their zones because then people can actually do stuff.
There are the lots across the street though, 334 and one down the road that are very similar to this lot in their size.
They actually 30,000 square feet?
They're larger.
They're larger, okay.
Yeah, they mirror this property in a lot of ways.
Okay, but on the south side of Troy Road?
No, that, that has been developed differently.
Yes, so you're surrounded by homes that barely make the R3 requirements.
That is correct, on the side of the applicant's property, yes. And you're correct, like across Troy Road, there are larger lots.
Trying to paint a picture of the neighborhood to see if this is reasonable, appropriate and.
Yeah, I'm looking at, I think it's on your sheet one also, if you look at the tax map. And you can see the lot sizes to the south of Troy Road. And again, just eyeballing it, I think there are even, most of the lots are even like 10,000 to 12,000 square feet range.
Yep.
Mr. Mandel?
Yeah, on the north side, they are larger and in fact, there is a, an older home for sale now. 1905 was constructed, but it needs work.
And it's backing up against Route 80.
And it's backing up against Route 80, you're correct. It's gorgeous on the outside, but even real, she says it needs work.
Any other questions for the engineer?
I just have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Napolitano.
We're just looking at Google Maps here and Zillow, it seems like it would fit right in. The houses in the area surrounding it, so there's some large homes there. I just had a question about what's, what's in the garage and shed now on that property?
Lots of vehicles. That's a pretty serious state of disrepair in that garage.
Yes, it is.
What's in there now?
I, we have to defer it to the applicant, I'm not very familiar with it, yeah.
Yeah. And that's coming down?
That garage is coming down, yes.
Okay. I think we're done with our questions. I'll open it up to members of the general public. Are there any questions of the general public for the engineer? Yes, please come forward. Speak into the mic and if you would, state and spell your, your name and give your address. Yeah, maybe the mic needs to get turned on.
I might not have turned that one on, just hold it in until it turns on in the back. In the back.
My name is John Skladany, spelled S-K-L-A-D-A-N-Y. I'm a resident in the area and just a couple of quick questions. The area is very, very wet, there's wetlands in the back. Has there been any drainage studies done with another structure going up? There is actually a drainage basin behind that house and I didn't know if it was going to affect any of the drainage, current drainage existing right now.
The way the existing drainage works is like it flows from the back towards Troy Road from this lot. And we are maintaining that drainage pattern. However, we are also adding is we are adding dry wells. There are currently no dry wells on the property for the existing house. And the impervious coverage is significant with that circular driveway and flare end at the end of the driveway. So we are cutting down on the existing impervious, however, we are adding some. But we are mitigating that with the provisions of the dry wells for each new house.
Okay. Then going back to the first structure, it's a single-family structure, isn't it?
That is my understanding, yes.
Because currently there's two families living there and actually probably more than that. How can we know that the new structure is not going to be made into some kind of a two-family? And presently there's like nine to 10 cars parked in the existing structure on a day-to-day basis. So that's a concern of all the residents in that area.
I will leave it for the applicant to answer that. However, like there are building code requirements and I think the architect can explain it much better. That if it's a single-family home or a multi-family home, there are different requirements. This house is going to be built as per the single-family requirements.
So the first house is not supposed to be a multi-family?
Again, I have no knowledge of.
I present here that that is only one family living in the house. But the applicant is storing some of his cars in the garage, which is why it looks like there's more cars there and people in the house.
But Mr. O'Neil, you would agree that this zone is a, is a single-family zone?
It's a single-family zone, this application is for single-family homes. We're not trying to design anything. You'll see when our architect comes up that they are in fact designed as single-family homes. And no one's trying to pull anything on foot, all the families here in this property.
I mean, somebody did bring up the fact that you're looking for six spaces for each house again. I mean, that would also be indicative of more than one family.
And again, as I said, it's like we got carried away because of the length of the driveway from the street. Technically you can park six cars easily. So that's why we use that number. But it's a single-family, you're probably expecting three, two to four cars, single-family. And that is very easily parked in the area that we are showing.
Again, going back to the first lot, but like I said, there's eight to 10 cars parked in the first house on a day-to-day basis. So I know there's maybe a truck or two for some kind of construction business, but when there's eight cars parked on a nightly basis, it certainly doesn't sound like one family unless it's, eight is enough.
Sir, if I could, this witness is for engineering questions, so I don't think he'd be able to answer that question.
Okay, well, I just, just wanted to know. I guess that's all the questions I had.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, bring the mic back up, you might need it again. All right. All right, any other questions from the general public? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I wish I was for the engineer.
You'll need to speak into a microphone.
And state your name and address.
Thank you. Not sure, oh, hi, my name is Risha, I'm also a resident of the local area, just wondering.
Could you spell your name for the record and give your address?
Sure, Risha, R-I-S-H-A, last name Patel, P-A-T-E-L. And address is 24 Harden, H-A-R-D-E-N Court, Persippany, New Jersey.
Thank you.
I wanted to know, are there any provisions for stormwater?
Yes, as I explained earlier, we are proposing stormwater management for existing and the new house. That can be, there is nothing existing on.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other members of the general public stepping forward, I'll close the public portion for the engineering witness.
Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Neil, please continue with your next witness.
Our architect, Ms. Vlade.
Do you swear firm tell truths before this planning board time? Okay, can you please, excuse me, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Ashan Randal, A-S-S-H-A-N, last name is V-A-N-D-A-L.
Please use your microphone.
I'm loud enough. I'm sure you will, yes, but I'll use the microphone.
Okay, Mr. O'Neil, I assume this is your expert, so if we can have her qualifications very briefly?
Yes, Ms. Vlade, you testified before the court.
Yes, yes.
How many times, one more time?
Actually once, it's been quite a few years, about four to five years before.
Your architectural license is still in order?
Yes.
I'd submit Ms. Vlade as an architectural expert for the season.
Are there any objections from any members of the board? All right, seeing none, the witness is acceptable as an expert.
Ms. Vlade, why don't we start off with your exhibit, please mark it as A3 for the season?
Sure. I do need a pen. So most of the hard work was done by Mr. Khan. And I was kind of given, okay, this is where you have to put the house. So I'm not going to go over the site, I'm just going to introduce my, my plans that I tried my best to meet all the requirements by the, by the applicant and, and by the site that was given to me. So it's a simple four-bedroom house, three and a half bathrooms and two-car garage. And I'm going to just walk you through basically the floor plans. It's entrance with a living room on one side, staircase to the second floor, two-car garage, dining, kitchen, breakfast area, family area. You can go in, in the house from the garage, have a mudroom and a powder room, coat closet. And then we go upstairs from the stair. We have three bedrooms on this side, one common bath. And, and there's a junior suite with an en suite bathroom and a, and a walk-in closet. And, and we have a laundry right in the middle, accessible to everyone. On this side, on top of the garage and in this corner is the master suite. Have master suite facing the front of the house with two walk-in closets and master bathroom. And elevations, try to do a little modern look that, that we are following right now. And it's, it has box windows on site and to break the monotony on, on this side. And, and at the back, to just give a little better look to the house. So we have like a central entrance and then balcony on top and then a box window over here and, and our continuous box window on this side. Similarly, the back of the house has a little, you know, two elements on this side. Little break with, with a material, double door to the back and, and another box window on this side to again, give it, give it, give a little, you know, interesting feature to the back. The other two sides, I tried to kind of break the monotony by just breaking some, you know, putting in some different materials and then, and then, you know, entrance to the garage set in from, from the side, not really exposed to the outside. And, and the other side has a box window with a, with a slightly different material on there and basically just a siding on that.
Ms. Vlade, would it be safe to say this is a house in keeping with the neighborhood?
Absolutely, absolutely. It's a single-family neighborhood and it is designed to be a single-family house.
And it's very much in the style and finishes of the neighborhood.
But I hope the style is better than what was in the neighborhood. It is, I, I would say it's an improvement on that.
Very good.
So, so, yes, the neighboring, most of the houses are little dated and older. But, but this is slightly, I mean, I would say it's like improvement on, on what's in, in some of the houses. Some houses are good, but this is, you know, in keeping with new trends in construction in the, in the single-family houses.
Thank you. I have no further questions for this witness.
Okay. Mr. Cagiano, any questions?
No.
Ms. Avate.
Just one, I think the plan indicates in the basement, there'll be a utility room and some unfinished areas. Do you have just a ballpark for how big that basement will be?
The basement is going to be basically under this area. And it also, at this point, it also depends upon how, you know, to my understanding, we are going to have it, but it's going to be considered, you know, depending upon, you know, the water table and all, the final, you know, level. But yes, I'm proposing just the basement under this L shape. And final permit drawings will show the basement, basement construction, and the location of the utilities in there.
Thank you.
Okay.
In your design, which I assume is intended to be built, how high is it to the top of the house from the average grade?
I do have one side only at 32, and the other side is 34 to the top of the property, of the ridge, actually, is 34. So average is going to be under the 35 that is required. And even if you modify the grade, we will modify the height of the structure accordingly, just to make sure that the total height of the structure does not exceed the required limit in the zone.
Any other members of the board with questions for the architect?
Mr. Chair, just as a condition of approval, that the basement would remain non-habitable space, unfinished, as a condition of approval?
So noted. Mr. Mandel.
No, sleeping quarters. I think that's what Mr. O'Neil, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Neil, Ms. Beale was buzzing in my ear, which she's doing rightly. Obviously, that is an area that is a space that people from the house may go down to use, but it will not be a space for sleeping quarters.
Oh, no. No, it's your bedroom.
As a condition of approval, you agree with me?
Yes, we do.
Okay. All right. Mr. Mandel.
Well, my question is kind of answered, but my question was, does that prevent a purchaser of that house at a later date from finishing the area?
Well, I believe that certain access requirements exist for basements and provided-
To sleep, yes.
Yes.
So, you know, I take finish to mean, you know, you put up walls and have a decent floor, not necessarily a bedroom and a closet and a bed.
Yeah, have a nice man cave.
A man cave, yeah.
I have to get a permit for that work.
Right. Right, yeah. So in general, I'm not up on Parsippany's ordinances as some other people may be, who may want to pipe in, who probably can speak to the permit. I don't think you get a permit for a basement.
You do. In the zoning department, if you were renovating the basement for an existing homeowner, you come to the zoning department with your floor plan done by a homeowner, you pay $10. Our stamp approves it, and it says right in it, no kitchen, no two-family. It prevents, and the only reason why zoning looks at it is we make sure you're not turning it into a two-family. Then from there, you submit to the building department. And their plan, if they find out that the windows are not egress windows, their stamp approval will be for no bedrooms. But you can come back later date with a new homeowner two, three years later, and if they, if you remove the windows and put egress windows in, you can make them bedrooms. So we do see it happen.
I understand that, yes.
I don't think the design is appropriate for that.
No. We rarely see that in something like this.
But I think that appropriately answers Mr. Mandel's question. Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right. I'll open it up to the members of the general public then. Any questions for the architect witness? Please come forward. Please state and spell your name and give your address. That microphone, I believe, has not been turned on yet.
Hello. My name is Reema Patel, R.E.E.M.A. Patel, P.A.T.E.L., living in 24 Harden Court. So my question is for you. I know you're building a house that's much, much better than the houses that are around there. So what is the plan for the backyard that is maybe close to that or have to?
I think it should be developed as a backyard as for my residential data and the typical activities that happen in any single-family house, probably will take place in the backyard. Because we just had some planting on the side, but I don't really, you know, it is the obvious that what the future owner or that we can go decide on.
So you don't have any plans for it yet?
At this point, it is going to be just a backyard. That's the way the house is going to be sold. Whoever is going to be prospective, your owner, it's up to them what they develop.
Any other questions?
None for me.
Okay. Yep, just return the mic. Thank you. All right. I'll go ahead and close the public portion then. Mr. O'Neil, do you have another witness?
No further witness.
Okay, very good. Are there any further questions from the board at this time?
I wanted to make one point on my comment four about the existing, just as, should it be approved, as a condition of approval, that that garage be removed prior to the subdivision being perfected, so you don't have accessory use without a principal use, so you don't have a garage sitting on a lot with nothing else.
That's fine.
Okay. All right. Seeing no other comments from the board at this time? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Nepal.
I'm just looking for clarification, Mr. Wenzel. Maybe you can explain, so a property needs to be 30,000 square feet in order to be subdivided, or this property needs to be 30,000 and 30,000?
Let me put it this way. In this zone, the ordinance requires a, I want to state it correctly, that the lot area is of any individual lot is to be 30,000 square feet. And this particular applicant, as to its current lot, exceeds that size. After the proposed subdivision, there would be two lots which are less than 30,000. So that's the nature that varies. But as it exists right now, it exceeds the 30,000 square feet.
So if someone came with a lot 29,999, they would not be able to subdivide it?
No. What that means is that that lot as it is right now is a, what we call pre-existing non-conforming to the zone. So they will be, so if it's one foot or more below that standard, it is below the requirement. That does not mean that they cannot ask for a subdivision, but this particular applicant actually exceeds that. That's the difference here.
Yeah, so there is an existing lot which exceeds the requirement, the two lots proposed require a variance because now that they've subdivided it, it's below the requirement.
Okay.
I've never seen an applicant who doesn't meet the requirement in the first place than asking successfully for two lots. I guess never say never.
You haven't been to the place I've been to.
At least not around here.
These important.
Any other comments or questions from the members of the board? Okay. Well, at that point, I'll go ahead and open it up to members of the general public, and then you'll have your chance for a closing statement. Any comments from the general public? Okay. Seeing none, come forward. Mr. O'Neil, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, and thank you to the board for listening to the application. This is a minor subdivision, as we pointed out. The lot is one of the older lots there on the street, one of the larger lots. In developing this application, it was on the mind of the professionals and the applicant to look around at the neighboring lots, to see the size of the neighboring lots, and to try to duplicate that, even though that would not be a permitted lot size. It is in keeping with the neighborhood. So that is why we've sized these lots and oriented these lots the way we did, trying to keep them with the immediately neighboring lots, which are all around that same size and same, there on cul-de-sacs and roads. This will, of course, fix the main road. So that was very much on our mind. We saw, even though the house is much nicer, it is in keeping with the houses that are on that neighborhood. We're not trying to do anything unusual or radically different than what is already in that neighborhood. We think we've duplicated those sizes in that orientation pretty well here as part of this application. We hope the board would agree and allow us to do this minor subdivision and this improvement, and improve the lot if you've driven by the lot. It needs improvement. It needs planting, it needs that garage needs to come down. We need to clean this up. So this will go a long way to help that, and we hope you agree.
Okay. With that said, I'll go ahead and open it up to motion from the board.
Just a few comments first?
Okay. I was going to allow for comments after the motion in case it went one way or the other, but please go ahead.
I just, actually, what I really want to do is ask our professionals, and this is in a sense for the greater understanding on the part of some of the people in the public. What we're approving here is not the architectural rendering. We are approving a subdivision of the land, giving them a new building envelope with which they can work in, and they don't have to put in a house that matches the wonderful, beautiful new house that was designed, but they can put in something else if they so desire.
Right. And if I may, Chair, answer Mr. Ginsmore's question. On the architectural plans themselves, the architect was nice enough to put on there the answer, which is for zoning approval only, not for construction, because obviously, when it comes time for construction, they're going to be much more detailed. But they have not asked for a variance for the height of the building, so therefore they will need to remain below that 30-foot, 35-foot standard. They have not asked for a variance from the, on the new lot, which is, don't tell me, 3.01. There are variances on that new lot, but as to the, as to the box of where that house would be built, those would, those would remain as per the Mr. Khan's drawings of showing where those setbacks are. What ends up being put up in that box may look very much, probably will end up looking very much like what's being presented, but that's not what's going to end up for the edification of everybody on the board. That's not what actually is going to end up being presented to the construction department. There is going to be much more detailed, both engineering and architectural plans that will eventually be provided. But the box, as we talked about, the height, the sides, the back, the front, where that exists, that will all remain the same.
But, Mr. Wenzel, if I may?
Right. Well, yeah, they are well back from the roadway, so they have a significant frontage.
This has come up before with this board, and I believe the way we've talked about it is if the board were to feel strongly that they wanted to see something very close to this house, they could put a condition not requiring that they build this house, but requiring that it be substantially similar or something to that effect. But I defer to your counsel on that.
Right. To the plans that we would, we would put in there that they would adhere to the plans submitted, subject to amendments being reviewed by township professionals, some of which are sitting right up here. And, Mr. O'Neil, I think, would you agree with me that, subject to changes to be reviewed by the township professionals, that what's been submitted by Mr. Khan and to some degree Ms. Vandals are what will eventually be presented to the township, subject to perhaps further amendment and refinement, to be reviewed and approved by township professionals? It's a very long-winded way of saying something, I know.
We agree with that. It's well put. Subject to further refinement, but this is a good representation of what you're going to say.
And I appreciate you.
We will make that work.
Thank you.
And then the second item, that since the applicant did not have a planner, normally when we have a subdivision, we don't like the idea of increasing the intensity of use of a particular piece of land when you end up taking a complying piece of land and make it two individual pieces that do not comply. But as far as I'm concerned, the question that I would have asked a planner, had you presented one, but we have a wonderful planner here on the board, is, does it appear that the two different, the two proposed lots are similar to, do they, do they fit within that neighborhood?
Yeah, I mean, I would say normally when we see a subdivision like this, where you have two undersized lots that are created as a result of the subdivision, you know, you would, you would be concerned with everything starting to seem tight, and you would also typically see on an overly small site, fairly significant variances on coverage, often multiple variances on side yards. We don't see that here. We see one side yard and then the existing non-conformity. We don't see substantial coverage variances. There are requested variances, but they're not that far above what's allowed or required. And I think the depth of these lots really serves to mitigate a lot of the potential concerns about them being undersized by area. That would be my recommendation. And what I assumed that a planner would have testified to if they had one.
Good assumption, I suspect.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandel?
I'm going to go back to the planner. I agree with you that the depth of the lot, and also on the south side of Troy, the size of the property, but this one more faces Troy, and on the north side of Troy, those are all large lots. Are we not opening ourselves up now for all of those lots to want to subdivide? In fact, the house I mentioned sits on over three acres. So you're allowing yourself, you know, it just becomes the norm, that's five or six houses that could possibly be built.
So this always comes up in questions of subdivisions. I see it come up many, many, many times, this board and others. And every application stands on its own. So you're not creating precedent if you were to approve this application or any application. If a future owner of a house across the street or a lot across the street wanted to subdivide that lot, they would have to prove their case, and who knows what variances they might encounter. I don't think the depths are perhaps quite as deep on the opposite side, so it's not going to be the same situation necessarily.
Okay.
On that note, Ms. Avate, so if a property owner wants to come, they can't say, well, back on September 27, 2021, you approved this lot, ours is, you know, larger than this, and you're going to, how do you, they can't bring that up?
I mean, they could bring it up. I would defer to Mr. Wenzel. I don't think that the argument would be valid and a reason for you to take a course of action.
Right. And I think Ms. Avate is entirely accurate on this. While that can be brought up, that is not what we term evidential, okay? Because you have to talk about your own lot, just as Mr. Khan did about this lot, about the particular circumstances with this lot, how he's dealing with various conditions if the lots were subdivided. And that applicant, whether it's the applicant across the street or any other applicant within the township of Parsippany or the state of New Jersey, has to show what is going on their side and cannot say, well, use the argument, well, Johnny did it, and now I should do it. That's not, it works in third grade, doesn't work in a planning board. I'm not sure it really worked in third grade, but I tried to use it. But the, but it must, you are always setting the precedent for this lot by making, when you subdivide the lot, then the lot is now subdivided, obviously, right? So that's how that goes forward for here. Anything else as to the other lots in the area, they all have to stand on their own.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Jerry.
For Mr. Cagiano. If I understood correctly, and the grade for drainage is two Troy Road?
Not that he testified to. Just to be clear, this is for a subdivision.
Right.
It's not for drainage and plot plan or site plan approval. I shouldn't use this word "site plan." It, this doesn't meet the criteria of a site plan. But for the details of the grading, details of stormwater management, details of soil and sediment control are not at this time. This isn't the creation of the lot.
Okay, understood.
And once the lot is, if the lot is created, they would need, then need to go, it's a single-family lot, uh, not part of a, a major subdivision. It would need to go to the town engineering office for plot plan review, grading review, stormwater management review.
Okay, understood. That answers my question. I, I, I put the cart in front of the horse a little bit there.
No, no problem. Yeah. All right, any other comments at this time? Okay, well, with that said, I'll go ahead and, and accept the motion on this application.
All right. Mr. Chairman, an application twenty-one, colon, five, twelve, Robbie Patel, three thirty-three Troy Road, block seven thirty-four, lot three. Uh, I move that we grant the minor subdivision with the nine, I guess it is, variances, uh, for a two-lot subdivision, subject to, uh, dedication of, uh, the portion of the property that sits in the right-of-way, uh, that the garage be removed before, uh, subdivision deed filing, that, uh, no sleeping quarters, uh, be provided in the unfinished basement. And, uh, also, Mr. O'Neil, my usual customary, I would ask that, uh, your proposed subdivision be reviewed by my office before, uh, filing. But that's.
Yeah.
Usual and customary.
That's what I moved.
Okay.
No, you would.
Do we have a second?
Second, Mealy.
All right, Mr. Mealy. Um, before taking a vote on this, are, are there any questions or, or comments about the motion? All right, I, I'll just state my piece here. Um, I usually have a very high threshold for subdivisions. And, uh, it's very difficult for me to, to move forward with something where there is so much, um, so many variances. However, I feel like, as Ms. Vate stated, as Mr. Dinsmore stated and others, that these are relatively small, um, variances. And you have, you have met my threshold here. So I appreciate the work that you've put into this. Um, we always have to balance out the, the expansion and the, um, the, uh, increased density that comes along with these things, as well as the permanence of a subdivision, with creating the opportunities to improve the land and, and the properties that are there. If we don't give you enough incentive to improve the property, then we wind up with degradation of our neighborhoods. So thank you for putting the effort into this. Um, I'll probably be going along with this, uh, as an affirmative, but, uh, I just wanted to state my case there. Any other comments at this time? All right, with that said, uh, Nora, would you please call the roll?
Did each?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Fageri?
Yes.
Vandel?
No.
Mealy?
Yes.
Appolitano?
No.
Veely?
No.
Von Aiken?
Yes.
Passes. Five yes, three no.
All right, the application passes. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.
Steve, don't be so quick.
We haven't closed the meeting yet.
Gathering up the evidence?
All right. Um, Ms. Vate asked for a few minutes, so.
I actually asked for thirty, thirty seconds, Chairman. I, I just wanted to give the board a heads up that, um, I've been working with the township attorney.
Susan, wait one second.
Wait a second.
If they're gonna talk, gentlemen.
Oops.
Mr. O'Neil?
You gotta move away from the door. Thank you.
Kinda continue. Um, I've been working with the township attorney and also some input from, from Jen Veely on some zoning changes that will be coming to you, uh, probably late October, early November. I think they're setting, uh, to be introduced to council, township council on October nineteenth. So there're gonna be some proposed, uh, definitional changes on uses and business zones, which is a master plan recommendation to try to, you know, clarify and expand what's allowed when it comes to things like personal services and gyms. It's been kind of an ongoing problem of some of these newer applications coming in, and there's not really a definition that covers them in the code. Um, some cleanup items, the, um, the state also, not cleanup, this is significant. The state recently adopted, uh, regulations on EV charging stations. And as part of that, they have a model ordinance. So we're gonna be looking to, um, you know, upgrade the township's ordinance to, uh, to adopt that model ordinance, which is already in effect at the state level. So it's already, whether we do anything or not, um, there's, I, I think you sent that around, Joe, didn't you?
Uh, I, yeah, I sent it to, uh, to, to Andrew and, and Susan. I didn't send it to the board, because obviously I didn't wanna infect the board with more thoughts than they needed, but.
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to circulate that, just for your edification. It's interesting what they've chosen to do, and, and, um, I think it, it kinda covers a lot of the things that we talked about.
Does it require a board application?
No, it doesn't allow a board application, generally.
So, yeah, so, 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 very, very briefly.
Yeah, I'll let you rotate.
This, this state has basically, uh, preempted a large part of, uh, EV charging station, uh, requirements. And, um, if someone was to voluntarily want to put it in, especially at gas stations, it's really meant for gas stations, to retrofit for, uh, EV stations, which kind of at the end of the day makes sense, right? You know, you see that the Wawa on, on New Road and other gas stations will eventually do that. So, uh, the state, for very unusual reason, I don't know why, but for some reason decided, you know, if a gas station wanted to renovate it and put in EV charging stations, they wouldn't have to make an application to the municipality. That'd be just easier and faster for them to do that.
Um, yeah, they basically said if, if, if all you wanna do is EV spaces, you don't have a site plan, you're not doing anything else, then it's just a, it's a zoning permit. It's not a board application.
Right, okay. Now, now there are additional requirements for, um, when a, uh, multifamily residential goes in, which is something that we've always had discussions on. And I think that's really where the township, uh, and I don't want to speak on behalf of, uh, Salat or, or the rest of the team, but I'm, I'm guessing that's really where the focus is gonna be on when these new applications, not on the old ones. The old ones are done.
Right.
But now we're talking about ones going forward and what their obligation's gonna be under the town ordinance. So we don't have to have the conversation like we normally do. Well, would you, would you kinda think about this?
Right, yeah, it standardizes it, which is, I think, a good thing. It, you know, has, and I don't, I don't have them off the top of my head, but it has standard requirements for multifamily and ugly commercial. Um, and then when you're looking at counting the parking spaces, actually, they count for two spaces. So that's pretty significant, too.
Okay.
Um, you know, up to a cap. You can't, you can't put, you know, twenty-five EV charging spaces to satisfy your fifty space requirement. Um, but, um, yeah, so we'll send that around, but, but stay tuned for that. And then the last one, which I think is a little bit more minor, is on mobile food vendors. Just trying to kind of wrap our hands around that. Jen's, Jen's been very involved in that one.
No longer my responsibility. It will become, uh, mobile food vendors right now need a permit from zoning, and, um, they also need help, and our ordinances contradict each other. So they are giving it all to the health officer, which I'm very excited, yeah.
So just a heads up.
Question for Ms. Vate on the EV.
Uh, so is it that the state is establishing their level? And if we wanted to, we could, uh, take steps above that, um, within our town ordinances?
You could. I think what we're recommending is that you start with the model ordinance. You can always be a little bit stricter. I think, uh, there may be some parameters on that.
Okay.
Um, you can't go lower than the state here. But we, you know, we thought, they, they give a model ordinance. It's not that difficult to kind of adapt our ordinance to it. Let's go ahead and get that on the books pretty quickly, and then if we need to tweak down the line, we could do that.
And, and you have the work that Mr. Vandel and his committee put into this, so we'll take that into account.
Right, right.
As I was gonna ask, are you incorporating the requirement for the circuit for single, two-family garages?
Uh, not for, I don't think for the single-family, the state does not get into that.
Why don't we make sure that that's in our system?
There were some concerns on the legal side about the enforceability of that, but we are, they have all of that.
How would I enforce that?
In the plans, can you?
For what, though? And what exactly?
New builds.
Construction, new builds.
New builds.
New single-family dwellings?
Yeah, that's what it was for.
They have a two-twenty, fifty, or sixty-inch circuit available on the garage.
So, we have all of that.
I think it was contained in that, still, just the building.
I know the construction officials, remember, they're state-regulated. So if it's not required by the state for the town to tell the construction official, those are very, to tell me to do it, that's easy, 'cause I, it's a local ordinance, and I enforce the local ordinance. But the construction official reports to the DCA. So if it's not a DCA requirement, they very rarely, they will fight that.
And then going to Ms. Veely's point, just very briefly, that's why the DCA enacted the ordinance. Because eventually what's gonna happen is that they're gonna start matching that up with construction code, uh, or what are they, uh, I'm blanking out, uh, co.
Uniform.
Uniform construction code, and they're gonna start matching, they're gonna start matching that up. So eventually, maybe they'll get there, but as far as right now, this, these are the initial baby steps.
Yeah, they're waiting for the DCA to, to, to come forward.
Right.
But this is a significant, uh, regulation that the state has come up with. I mean, I think it's sort of sent some shockwaves around.
Already has.
Mr. Vandel, just for the record, that part of the, of your proposal is one of my favorites, so.
It makes perfect sense. You're saving a whole lot of money.
Sure, yeah.
They did, they did require, I think, level twos, so that was, that was something that you.
Level twos there.
Two's, uh, in, in the commercial and multifamily, I believe.
Yeah, well, yeah, that would make sense.
Yeah, so they, so they got at that level of detail as well.
I think Stock and Shop is putting in, uh, two charges.
They're in there already.
They're in there already.
Yeah, they're actually, there's three.
I don't want to give you that for now.
Stop and shop, I think, is, uh, is kind of.
And other, other.
Morris plain.
Yeah.
No, Morris plain.
Yeah, so.
I mean, you know, you got those.
That's what I'm worried about, is they're, they're going in without a notice.
Any other, uh, any other comments from the board?
Just, just me, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I brought it up again tonight, and sometimes other people bring it up. And is there any, uh, you know, process or, uh, working group or anything to, to help? At least, maybe I'm the only one, maybe not to understand these height regulations that we have and what we can do to tamp that down. Um, it just feels like, uh, maybe it's just me who has this question. Every time we get a subdivision or a knockdown, rebuild type thing. And I just feel thirty-five feet's absurd, especially when they play games with average grade and, and final grade. And I couldn't follow the guy. He might not have been able to follow it himself.
You know, they, just, just, just so we're clear, the planning board can only decide based upon the application of the ordinance.
Right.
So the council, when it sits in the same seats, the council's the one that sets those ordinances. So, uh, it's really the council, and, uh, I think Ms. Vate indicated, you know, when we do the master plan, those are the type of things that are brought up, uh, in terms of what's the appropriate heights and, and widths and whatnot. Uh, and really, it's not the planning board to make a determination that thirty-five is too high. Uh, you may feel that way personally, but you have to, just like.
No, I understand.
Judges, you know, you have to enforce, uh, the law today.
This is my question, we give.
I think what Bruce is saying is, when we suggest.
Yeah.
That they revise that thirty-five to.
And how do we go about doing that?
Well, uh, you can go to counseling. That the, the planning board doesn't do that in, in that way.
In the past, we have, we actually sent a proposed zoning change to require that, uh, homes built on lots that were less than the standard in, in certain zones. So consider less than five thousand square foot, could not be more than thirty-two feet. How, homes that were within the envelope to the street, that they did not meet the front yard setback, were required to reduce the front, the, the, the height of their homes, uh, to, uh, offset how much closer they were to the street. I've forgotten the formula that we tried to get them to consider. Uh, these were rejected.
Yeah, multiple times. Yeah, we, in the thirty years we, I've been here, what would you say, we've tried three, four times?
Yeah.
We even proposed one where the main part of the house would meet, would meet, would be less than thirty-five, but the garage wouldn't be two-story.
Right.
So that you wouldn't have that big box effect, and they, they, they didn't wanna talk about it.
And so I think this summary of this, and we saw this with regard to our, our EV project, I'll call it, is that, um, while we can certainly make, uh, make some suggestions as a board, if this is not something that the council has already asked for us to look at, there's, there's not necessarily gonna be a whole lot there for us in the world right now.
I mean, it's in the master plan, certainly, and we all remember, there was a lot of discussion about building height. And, um.
Thanks, Nora.
And we, we actually did some work last year on potential proposals. Um, but it ultimately, it's council's decision.
So the, the summary is, Fageri for council in two thousand twenty-four?
I mean, it's so platforming, building heights.
Yeah, I mean, to me, particularly with subdivisions.
Yeah.
Like this, there, I don't, I don't think there's anything in the ordinances that keeps the, the new home to tower over the old home, let alone the neighbor on the other side.
The old home in this case is immense.
Oh, I know, but I'm saying, if you were on the other foot.
There's still the variances which they have to ask for, for building height, et cetera. And, and anytime they ask for a variance, you have the ability to reject that.
No, this is true, but if a house is thirty, and the property is subdivided, and the neighbor is thirty, you could have somebody in the second, in the new home, that's thirty-five or thirty-four point nine-nine feet, and they don't, they don't see the sun. I mean, it, it, I, I don't know, I, I, I just think we're making a lot of hard feelings out there with.
When you're dealing with the side yard setback and things like that, you know, if, if you're in Lake Hiawatha, that's one thing, where you have a thirty-five-foot house.
Right.
Right next to a twelve-foot house or a fourteen-foot house. I agree with you, because there's a five-yard setback on the side, side yard setback. So you're dealing with totally ten feet between the houses. Here, you're a hundred and twenty feet back from the road, and you were sixty feet apart down the middle between the two houses. I think, I think thirty-five feet is fine. But when you do have these substandard lots, the one thing that I, I, we didn't try, Jennifer, was I wanted to change, to suggest that when you have, uh, in an R-six or in any of these, if you have a substandard lot in any one of the smaller, uh, more densely populated, uh, locations, that the height be dropped to twenty-eight or thirty-two feet.
Like in an R-four that's a Lake Hiawatha, Lake Porcupine has a lower height than, say, R-two where there's lots of thirty thousand, and you have a larger setback. And I thought we did propose that. We had different, different, different diagrams and formulas for the different. And, um, I also think the last time we did it, it was election year. So.
Yeah.
So maybe next.
Remember? Nothing's happened this year.
Next year.
I think, I'm pretty sure, like, we timed it poorly on, on that year.
Next year is no election whatsoever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And remember, the Board of Adjustment is gonna give their recommendations, and those generally tend to be the opposite of ours. Because remember, every single-family dwelling that comes for me for height setbacks, I deny them and I send them to the Board of Adjustment. They don't wanna see those applications. So they are the opposite opinion of ours, generally. And I have to say, Mr. Dinsmore, you have never been, but many of the other members, they don't want all those applications. They think I'm being a nitpick and being difficult and following the ordinance, and why can't I be more gray area? So they actually, they wanna change to the other extreme than, than we do. So, um, dialogue with them is, is going to.
I'll certainly look forward to what their report is this year. I don't, I don't think I was a part of it, uh, reviewing that at any point in the past, but, uh.
I wrote about a half dozen of them in the nineties.
Okay. But, uh, I think we'd definitely like to see what are the things that they're, that they're having to deal with? And, and how can we, um, we as the, the township, uh, work to reduce the workload and have the overall objective be still positive for the town?
I have a report that I could, Nora could pass to all the members of last year's. I have a report that I could, Nora, could pass to all the members of last year's variances, and the percentages of how many building, how many impervious, so you could kind of get it to see an idea what the residents are going for to the Board of Adjustment, and kind of weigh what should be fixed.
That'll be great, all right. Well, with that said, I don't wanna hold up anybody any longer, so I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So we can say Eli and Paige.
All right, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned.